Commendatory matter, this is John Reagan Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Todd Corain.
Present.
Ciara Smara.
Here.
Duarcas Nowlan. Ronald Brooks. Town officials and employees participating when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Town Planner Adam Menard.
Yeah.
Good evening, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, January 24, 2023, now called or ordered at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely. Remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, and extended on June 16, 2021. For this meeting, the planning board is convened in person and by remote access. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133-747-477. Or the public can join via computer at gotomeeting.com/join/133-747-477. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Vision. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? Being none. Please note that this meeting is being, accordingly, these members of the planning board, employees and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us with a salute to the flag. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. Meeting business ground rules. I, the Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and into the microphone in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First on the agenda tonight is applicant Mass Ten Enterprises LLC requesting special permit under Section 3.2.5.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a drive-through restaurant at 824 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 66, parcel 148, continued from our January 8 meeting.
Duarcas is on the board, present.
He is?
Yep. He's on.
Duarcas, you're online now? You're muted. No, there's your speaker. They said now we have a call.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
So, anyone representing Mass Ten? We now have enough members?
I didn't call.
What's that, Adam?
Did you say something?
I just said that we have four members now here. One online and three here.
Good evening, my name is Patrick Doherty. I'm a professional engineer with Midpoint Engineering and Consulting. Here on behalf of the applicant Mass Ten Enterprises LLC for a proposal to reoccupy an existing building with a drive-through use. The drive-through use would be a Starbucks restaurant. The site's located at 824 Southbridge Street. It's in a plaza with two other buildings. Site plan is shown here. To the left is a Chili's restaurant. The middle portion is the site that we're talking about here. It's a two-story building. Total's about 6,400 square feet. The second floor of the building is occupied by a dentist. The first floor is currently vacant, it's been vacant for about three years. It is the space that we're talking about. And to the right on the site plan is a Taco Bell and Kentucky Fried Chicken use that also has a drive-through. The site was originally approved, the middle portion of the site was originally approved for a two-story office building with the first story building being a bank with drive-through. However, it was never leased, and it was finally occupied, I think about after eight years of being vacant, for office use. It was actually my office and the office of Galaxy Development, who's the parent company of Mass Ten Enterprises. So, very familiar with the site. We propose to do some minor site improvements along with the reoccupy. Construct a small addition or a bump out per se for the drive-through where the staff would pass items through the window into a car. We're proposing some radius improvements as you enter from Route 12 and Route 20. You may recall that roadway was fairly recently improved by separating the east and westbound lanes with a median. At the time, there was a D cell lane in the radii, worked pretty well, but that D cell lane, along with the improvements, was removed as part of the highway project. So, we've got some radius improvements at the entrance. And we're showing some improvements to the site where drive-through vehicles exiting would rather than going straight and enter the mainstream flow, they would have to make an immediate right into the parking area and then a left before they could exit the parking lot. The other sites, Starbucks, their peak time of the day is morning. Between about 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM is when the bulk of their transactions occur. Other users on the site, the Chili's isn't even open, they don't open until afternoon. And it is a very slow period of time for the Taco Bell and the KFC. So, our belief is that the amount of traffic leaving wouldn't be in conflict with the other users of the site, especially at their peak times. We provided some information in the package as far as the amount of traffic that would leave the site or the timing of it. As you know, it wouldn't be a steady stream of traffic. Takes some time to go through and pick up your order and whatnot. About 130 transactions occur per hour for Starbucks during their peak hour. About 54% of those transactions, it's thought, would be through the drive-through. So, we're talking roughly one car a minute that would be exiting the traffic, entering in, exiting the drive-through lane. As far as circulation for the drive-through, vehicles for the most part would enter via the curb cut on Route 12 and 20 where they would make a left, and they would proceed past the parking lot, make a right, and a right to get into queue. We provided some information on queue lengths and an analysis how the queue length for this project would compare with other drive-through sites in town. This site would have about 430 feet of stacking before traffic could ever cause backups onto Route 12 and 20, which is probably double what the normal is in town and would be the largest queue for any of the drive-throughs in town. So, we provided that analysis as part of the packet. Along with the drive-through, we'd be constructing a small outdoor seating area that could accommodate a few tables. And, you know, that's about all we would be doing for site improvements. We did have a staff meeting before we put the application together. We had some comments from police that they'd like to see some cameras introduced to the project that would not only face our parking lot, but could capture vehicles on Route 12 and 20. And we said that that's something we could certainly do. We'd ask for the specifications or, you know, ask for some help on what type of equipment they would think is appropriate. We spoke at the fire department, they had some questions on turning movements. In our packet, we prepared a turning template using their largest fire apparatus and showing how that could circulate through the site. Haven't received comments back from either departments to date. But, you know, I'm assuming that they got that information and we're happy with it. You know, we did submit this similar proposal about three years ago. It wasn't approved.
I remember.
I'll be the elephant in the room right now. Some things have changed since then. It's obvious that, you know, we're still going through the pandemic. That has changed the habits of a lot of consumers. And likewise, different businesses are adapting. Right now, the highest growth in the quick serve restaurant business is ordering through apps and picking up at a drive-through window. Any of these businesses aren't going to succeed if they're not adapting to people's needs. So, Starbucks absolutely needs drive-throughs in all their new locations and is something that would be needed here as well. We also changed the, we had originally put together our application package, you know, three years ago without changing the exiting of the site. As I mentioned, the site was originally approved to have a drive-through bank. It was constructed, you know, for a drive-through bank. So, the way that the site works now is cars would come along in the space where we're showing the drive-through lanes is actually a double wide, you know, 24-foot lane of pavement without parking, and that goes straight out into the main flow of traffic. There were some concerns last time around that that was too much traffic blending in with the main line of traffic. So, that's where we took a second look at it and changed it so that the exiting vehicles for the drive-through would go into the parking area just to alleviate some of those concerns. Regarding Starbucks specific as a tenant, they generally look to have at least the ability to stack seven or 11 vehicles in a queue lane. That's pretty much where they max out where the customers feel that there's too many people and will probably go down the street to the next one or come back later. For 11 vehicles, that would be about 220 feet. And as I mentioned before, we got about 420 feet on this site before any backups could occur onto Route 12 and 20. We heard about other sites in town that were causing problems where vehicles were stacking up, trying to make a left-hand turn, where to get into a parking lot where vehicles were queued out into the street. Like I said, those sites had much shorter queue lanes and the ability to make left-hand turns into the site as well as left-hand turns out. 12 and 20 is divided here, so there's only the ability to make a right-hand turn in to the site and a right-hand turn out to the site, which is a better scenario in this case as well. We didn't have any support from the previous police department or the chief at the time. He felt that the drive-throughs were causing a lot of problems in town. When we met with staff this time, I believe the current chief and the current safety officers don't have that fear in this case because this side of town's got less traffic. The westbound traffic in the morning, when the peak of the road is, the peak of the road going westbound is less in the morning and more in the evening, which also is in our favor for traffic coming in and out in any conflicts that could be present. So, you know, I don't want to speak for them, but I feel that there's a comfort level now as far as the police and traffic safety go.
Duarcas, do you have any questions?
Yeah, one quick question, John. So, there's no access to Maple Street, right, from this property?
There is currently a driveway curb cut that allows folks from the site to exit onto Maple Street, but it's signed as a do not enter, so you can't get into the site from Maple Street.
Yeah. Sometimes they'll take a left, but they'll always go right.
My experience, you know, I worked in that plaza for about 10 years. Very few people, I know, granted, I wasn't there at night when the Chili's was busiest, but very few people, if any, made a right-hand turn out there. It would only be people that, you know, wanted to travel eastbound on 12 and 20 because of the roads divided and you can't make a left out directly. But there is the ability to go right and there's a U-turn at the next intersection up, so that helped things out.
No more questions from my end.
No questions?
Just a couple. What are the hours going to be?
They generally operate from 7:00 to 9:00. They kind of adjust individual stores, but that's what I've been told, that this store would be 7:00 to 9:00, it would be similar to the other store, and the other store in town would remain in operation.
That was going to be my second question. My third question is, so, and Adam can correct me if I'm wrong, but when this project was initially permitted, that exit out was supposed to be blocked with a gate. I have gone there several times and often see people actually come out and make a right on that street because they want to get back to 12 and take a left, and they don't want to do the loop. And I've seen several accidents at that location as cars try to dart across essentially four lanes of traffic in order to make that left. So, I'd like to know if, Adam, am I correct in my belief that that was supposed to be gated?
Yes, I believe. Believe I looked at some plans, that they were, was a gate.
So, my question is, is there anything preventing from putting that gate in now, if that is the case, in order to ensure no cars try to make that movement out? All your traffic is projected to go out onto 20, make a right turn, and proceed that way, but the reality is that some will try to make that movement? And there is a, you know, a clear crash evidence at that intersection because of it?
Is there a reason, Adam, why that gate was never put in? Do we have?
I do not know.
I know it was before your time. In my time.
Yeah. It might have just been missed.
I know that do not exercise don't work. They don't work at O'Reilly's. They go right out there, over the rubble strip and in over the rubble strip.
I may offer that, you know, should the meeting be continued, I could, you know, speak with the police and fire and see what their thoughts are on that, you know, that if it were a condition, it would have been, you know, 15, 16 years old, and things have changed since then. Yeah, so, you know, I'd feel more comfortable, talk to the police, see if they, you know, feel there's many accidents at the end of Maple Street there. Having an open access there is important to them, you know, because it's there now.
No, I mean, I would just want an answer on the status of that gate and whether it's going to be put in or not before I'm prepared to vote.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions? I have a couple. One I see is, when you come around, you have to go into the Chili's parking lot basically for your queue line for the drive-through and go around. Then you come all the way around, take a left to go out front, and now you have cars crossing you for them to get out. You know what I mean? You've got cars coming in, cars trying to get out, same intersection.
Yeah, and, you know, on a small site like that where everything's blowing up, it seems that it's very congested. You've got to remember, it's about one vehicle a minute. You know, if we were to stop and count out a minute, it's an actual long time. The other users in the site, it's not like, you know, some of the larger shopping centers with supermarkets or, you know, multiple large buildings where there's a lot of in-and-outs going on at the same time. I was there for, you know, 10 years, like I said. There's hardly any traffic using that, and we did do a traffic memo and had traffic counts done during the peak times of the site during the morning and the afternoon. The conflicts are very minimal, and even if you added in another one car per minute entering and leaving, it still is a very, very light traffic.
I've seen there before. You ever had a drive-through that was actually working there?
Right, but, you know, there's many, many sites with drive-throughs with other users that I've been involved in. Many, a lot of Panera's are out in pads that were done later on. Starbucks and End Caps, you know, I've personally been involved in, you know, several projects with similar type setups and larger scale, more traffic going in, more and more buildings. And it just works. It's, you know, a traffic, one traffic a minute, it's all metered going out because you have to wait for your stuff to get through the window, so it's not a whole lot of traffic, you know, car after car waiting to make these turns.
I can see it happen, though. I can really see it happen, the way Dunkin' Donuts works on downtown and out by parking shop. My next question is, your hours are 7:00 to, 7:00 AM to, or 6:00 AM to 9:00?
Yes, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, yeah.
You may not interfere with Chili's Monday through Friday during the day, but Saturday and Sunday, according to your comparison or project trip generation, you're going to be, there are going to be a lot of cars going in and coming out right in the midday. 127 cars an hour you got here.
And that's, that's...
If they're in there, say they're waiting in the queue line between the island that's toward Starbucks and then the island toward, or actually the building of Chili's, people aren't going to be able to use those parking spaces because there'll be cars blocking them. You know what I mean? Not only that, but they won't be able to get out. That's my concern. And I don't know how to alleviate that. I understand your predicament. I understand why you want to do this.
And I just offer that, you know, we don't feel it's a predicament. Like I said, Starbucks, you know, seeks to have 11 cars in queue, which would bring them, maybe one car at the start hour and then the rest in here. Their peak rate of traffic, which is the, you know, roughly 140 trips, is in the morning, morning peak, not in the afternoon on Saturday when Chili's is starting to ramp up. You've got to remember Chili's does offer lunch, but that's not their biggest business. They're in evening, evening peak.
Right, but on the weekends, they're pretty busy at lunchtime, like Saturday and Sunday. During the week, no, you're absolutely right, there's hardly anybody there.
Right, but we're talking about, you know, again, less than one car a minute going to the Starbucks at that point. Their peak, during their peak, it's about one car a minute, and it tails off during the afternoon and into the evening hours. I don't. Yeah, I mean, if you, between now and the next meeting, if you go and watch vehicles exiting the Starbucks, it's, that's what it is.
Well, Starbucks downtown, it doesn't have a drive-through, correct? There's no way to put a drive-through in that building?
I haven't looked at it. If there is, I'm sure that they're going to propose it at some point. You know, I don't work for the owner of that plaza.
We don't have an answer from the fire department. To see if they, I know you're showing the turning radiuses and all that, but until I have word from them that it's okay, I don't feel comfortable about voting on it. And same with the police department. And then as far as the gate goes, I don't know if we can legally make them put it in or not, but Todd isn't comfortable, do we get an answer? I don't know where that answer comes from, DPW?
I would defer to Adam. My, either DPW or likely, you know, inspectional services or the building commissioner will probably have to go back and look at.
I'm going to address that, Adam.
Oh, probably be a comment, looking at the front, but I'll make sure they don't turn to the rear and field and commit.
You're cutting out, Adam, I can't understand you.
It's probably a bit of both, a little bit higher department has access.
It doesn't come through you. You just, every other word you just disappear.
Combination of departments, I'm not sure exactly which one of these said.
Combination of departments like police, fire, DPW?
Yes.
Building, maybe?
Building.
Okay. So, in light of that, I'd like to continue this to our next meeting. I know it's another two weeks, guys, but I don't have, I don't have a comfortable...
We're very comfortable with that. We, you know, we want to get all the information you guys are requesting. We wouldn't want to, you guys to make...
Adam can check with the police department, fire department, building department, TPW, about the gate. Like I said, I don't think they can make you put it in, but there aren't that many people that go out that way. I've gone out that way, but I don't have a problem. But could I have a motion to continue this to our next meeting?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Duarcas?
Aye.
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 So, if aye drawn, reason aye, it is a vote. See you in a couple weeks, guys. Next on our agenda tonight is applicant Tesla Incorporated requesting a special permit and seeking relief under Section 6.3.2 Parking of Auburn Zoning Bylaw for eight charging stations and associated equipment at 385 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 33, parcel 87, continued from our January 8 meeting. Are some of you gentlemen here for Starbucks?
Yep. Tesla, yep. Good evening, Matt Burke, on behalf of Tesla. We presented here two weeks ago, but for your benefit, just in the gentleman on Zoom, we're looking to add superchargers to the Auburn Mall. We have eight existing superchargers, looking to double that, so 16 total. So, it'd be eight additional superchargers. It's an upgraded utility transformer, an additional cabinet, and then additional ballards and signage. It's a, in simplest terms, essentially doubling the site. As you're looking at it with the mall to the left, it's moving closer to the mall to the left. And so, we're here for section 6.3.2, just with any changes to the parking site plan that the mall has. We are using eight existing spaces, not losing any. There's a partial one that was created with the initial install that we're going to use for our ADA compliance. So, I don't, I know there were some questions last meeting about lighting and ADA compliance and some other stuff, but I think at the time we resolved those. So, happy to, you know, answer any additional questions, but, you know, respectfully hoping we can get our approval here tonight.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Being none. Duarcas, do you have any questions?
No questions from my side.
Yeah?
No questions except, did you, were you able to, with respect to the ADA, AAB requirements for the space, were you able to review those or are you going to review those before it's constructed?
We'll review those with the inspectional services when we seek our building permit. Our read is that it is compliant, but whatever it takes to be compliant, we will be compliant.
Okay, no questions, thank you.
Let me ask this. Does Tesla make a handicap vehicle?
They do not, but, you know, I with Massachusetts and federal law, we do.
I hope no one's going to use it.
Well, there's still handicap users that can drive a Tesla. They can be modified with hand gears.
Hand gears, yeah, I get that. So, you have, I believe this is one, is that what you're showing on here with the space that has all the slashes for the handicap space?
That's correct, yes.
So, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. You have a total of like 16 or 17 parking spaces for chargers?
That's correct.
Adam, what's the, how many handicapped spaces do you have to have for that many parking spaces, just one?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Still having a problem with that. You're just basically moving up toward the opening.
That's correct, yeah, there's eight existing spaces there that the chargers will use, you know, one space per charger essentially. And then with the initial install, there's kind of a little half space, if you will, and that's what we're using to fit the ADA space. So that was already part of the initial approval and installation.
The half space becomes the side for the handicap spot, right?
That's correct.
I don't have any more questions. No more questions here? Any more questions, Duarkash?
No, no more questions from me.
May I have a motion to approve as submitted?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Close the hearing first.
Oh, yeah. Have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, Duarkash?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Aye.
So John Ries and aye, it is a vote. May I have a motion to approve as submitted for the Tesla added electric charging stations?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Duarkash?
Aye.
Sierra?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself as an aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You too.
Next on the list is applicant Nordic Industrial Properties requesting site plan approval under section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw in addition to an existing structure and new freestanding structure for commercial industrial use at 1214 Sword Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 11, parcels 13 and 144, continued from our January 8th, 2023 meeting. Is there anyone online that's representing Nordic Industrial Properties? Adam, have they requested a continuance?
Um, yeah, yeah, that's fair. Especially see if they updated their review last week, so they're still here coming out. Hopefully on the next meeting.
Okay. May I have a motion to, might have to have a motion to recontinue it, correct?
Yes.
Motion to continue this to our next meeting?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Duarkash? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Ries and aye, it is a vote that will be moved to our next meeting of Valentine's Day. The next applicant is Robert Lemansky for GL McKinstry Trust for a definitive subdivision plan for two lot, single family home development with a site improvements on the property located at Claire Drive and Linda Avenue, Auburn, Mass., 01501, located at Claire Drive and Linda Avenue, Auburn, Mass., 01501, continued from our October 25th meeting, 2022. Is there anyone online representing Mr. Lemansky?
No, I don't see anyone.
They, um, did they request a continuance?
Yes, I, they have a new engine, they are, she's working with DKW on the stormwater stuff right now. Hopefully they'll have new plans to us in the near future, so it might be worthwhile to put it out on, so it's February 28th.
Around what?
February 28th.
February 28th, okay. May I have a motion to continue that hearing until our February 28th meeting?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Duarkash?
Aye.
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 And I, myself, John Ries and aye, it is a vote, it's continued to our February 28th, last day of the month. Other business, Commerce Drive bond reduction, do you have anything on that, Adam?
No, not yet. I should have put that on the agenda, um, to be with Gray, now to get a number out, hopefully next meeting.
Okay, we have CMRPC delegates that you're looking for, correct? We have, do we still have Steve?
Yeah, so so I'm the one of them and Steve is the other one. Steve is willing to continue if nobody from the boarding, planning board wants to.
Duarkash, you interested in that?
I missed the last part, John, can you repeat that?
It's the CMRPC delegates. What it is, is the, is for working with, Tom could probably explain it better than I can, futuristic things to do in the town, how to.
So so it's it's the Regional Planning Organization for Central Massachusetts that looks at planning documents for housing, economic development, long range, transportation plans, et cetera. Includes delegates from the various communities within the CMRPC area. It meets quarterly, and one of the benefits of us attending is that Adam gets professional technical support from CMRPC staff that gets earned by us participating. So if you're interested in long term planning, economic development, housing, transportation, et cetera.
Or even being an alternate, right?
Yeah, well, this is, so there's two delegates, yeah. So this would be, this is, I believe there's three because the town administrator chooses one as well, but the planning board has to nominate two people.
Yeah, I I would definitely be interested in that. Thank you for the update there.
Okay, so you'll have to fill out the form in the last sheet of the package from last time.
Sure, I can fill those out, I just need a, a dollar, it's kind of.
And Adam, should we also have an alternate in case one of us two do not attend?
Yeah, if you want to choose an alternate, if you're in Gray, I'll sit on it.
No Sierra, if you're interested. Okay, you were going to look at it last time, this one?
I know, I want to, but I'm I'm strapped for time.
Ron's not online to ask, so.
Yeah, Ron passed pretty quick last meeting. Okay, sounds good. So Adam, do we have to vote the two positions?
Yes, please.
Okay, so.
I nominate Duarkash now to be a CMRPC delegate?
I'll make the second.
All all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're elected, Duarkash.
Great.
Do I have to reappoint you?
Thank you.
And I'd like to re, uh, put Todd up for reappointment for the CMRPC post, may I have a motion to reelect Todd?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Sierra?
Aye.
Duarkash?
Aye.
Aye, you're reelected. Okay, next on the agenda is meeting minutes from 1/8/2023. May I have a motion to approve as submitted?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Duarkash?
I was absent, but I read the meetings notes, aye.
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 Myself, John Ries and aye, it is a vote. Member town planner update, housing production plan update? Adam?
Yes, so the town, we see they grant to update our housing production plan. This is kind of required plan, updated every year. So we'd like to offer a plan for, excuse me, in the planning process.
Charlie Brown.
We didn't really get that, but I think we can hear it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Duarkash?
Aye.
Aye.
Sierra, aye.
Aye.
John, myself, John Ries and aye, it is a vote, meeting is now adjourned.